It's five o'clock, time for the September tenth meeting of the Sherwood Planning Commission. Please call the roll.
Middleton.
Here.
Bruno.
Here.
Gillum.
Here.
Knight.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
You've received a copy of the August minutes. There were several corrections made to that. I think it was items five, six, and seven originally said words to the effect that the rezone was for, this was the Powhatan Drive rezone, said it was rezoning from R1 and C3 to C4, and it should have read C3 to C4. Are there any other corrections? And those have been made. Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Knight.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda, Richard?
Yes, sir, we have a request for a replat, and that is for Stone Hill Fades Five, Lot sixty-five, R sixty-six, R sixty-seven, R sixty-eight, R. That is a final plat, and we have a revision to make corrections in the bearings. The distances for the lots and those measurements are correct. The bearings were not exactly right, and that's been corrected. So it's more of a calculation correction and a clerical, you know, the depiction on there than anything else. There's no change in anything. All of this was already approved as a final plat, and this change is just to make the corrections in those bearings. So if it will meet with your approval, we'll get that under new business, I guess.
Okay.
And then the other is a request for approval of Travel Estates Six B as a final plat.
So without objection, we'll have those to new business. Is there any other changes to the agenda? Is there going to be table of an item?
Yes. On the item number seven, zoning amendment for ninety-one, twenty-one, Jackson Oakado from R1 to R1 additional, we had asked for a public hearing and had advertised correctly, and the signs are up. However, we did not send the certified letters again. They were sent once, but that's back when we were looking at a different zoning request. So we would ask that item seven be tabled.
Without objection, that will be pulled from this agenda and tabled for consideration in the October. Any objection? Moving on, item number five.
Zoning amendment for Lot Four, San Vincent North Edition, from C2 to C3, Thomas Engineering Agent.
Kevin?
Yes, sir. While not material in nature, Lot Four is shown as actually Lot Five as platted with all the due approvals of the property. As platted, it's proposed Lot Five. But that's technically what we're proposing. And proposed Lot Five as platted would be one point eight acres, but the subject area for rezoning is still one point five acres. It's a rezone from C2 to C3, one point five acres. This is in relation to a proposed eighty-seven hotel, related to the site plan that you all have also taken a look at, taken a look at from a preliminary plating standpoint. Tonight you will be looking at your own or site plan. Make it fine. It's essentially like they're clear, very cross, probably very clean. Coming in for a replat, see where there's this C2 zoning line, the parcel line in relation to zoning line is a little offset. That's really a scaling error, but essentially you need to have this C2 zone become C3, which occupy a hotel or a residential structure. There's the exhibit of a submitted staff. There's the superimposed title, this is the package area that we're considering. This is one point five acres of proposed Lot Five. It's a dog wearing a heater. That is already zoned, C3 is purely one point three, passing one point eight acres. Proposed Lot Five being, having C3 as well. Here's, oh, see, this is preliminary plat. South side of Heritage Way.
As this is a request for a rezone, this requires a public hearing. I'll call the public hearing open at this time. Does anybody wish to speak on this application? Hearing none, I close the public hearing. Gentlemen, do you have questions or concerns?
I'm glad that we proved the request of rezoning from C3.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to recommend to the city council that they change the zoning from C2 to C3.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Knight.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Item six.
Site plan for Lot Four, San Vincent, North Edition, Thomas Engineering Agent.
The report in front of you actually does make the correction. The site plan is proposed Lot Five, one point eight acres. It's worth one point eight acre portion of the two lots that you see on the chart you all have seen before, and this is something that preliminary plat shifts this line that's existing here in a westward direction, taking it from one point five acres to one point eight acres. So the subject property site plan is one point eight. That one point eight acres is also shown as graphic in red lines, a graphical shift from the existing parcel line shown in white in relation to zoning lines. August eighth, you all did approve the preliminary plat, which sets the land area for the site plan itself. There are several outstanding items that are listed in front of you. There's still a note, this report, consistent report note that the staff has maintained that ruling on the site plan should be tabled until this council approves the zoning. Any condition that has approved the zoning. Again, it's more of an administrative procedural thing. Staff's domain to use, ruling on a site plan that necessitates zoning, that doesn't tend to exist, is something that the planning should consider. Still outstanding, that the staff does have it in support. That is up for most discretion.
Do it as a condition?
That is up to you all. Yep. As a small, centralization, obviously, for pure review.
And the question about the parking, has it been resolved?
We have an outstanding item about, well, parking as far as the percentages, I think Mr. Puddle has been privy to discussions about how ADA is dealt with. So from that standpoint, yes.
Kind of agree with Scott on this, make a motion to table it. Okay, we have a motion in a second to table until October or pending city council approving approval of the rezoning.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Knight.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
That takes care of the part of agenda there. The next item is old business. The Vision 2040 Committee met on the twentieth, and they generated, James Walden, that basically was his last meeting with that committee, and he presented what amounts to a final draft of the draft plan. There still needs to be some corrections, that needs to be proofed, and there's going to be a meeting later this week, I believe, with Metro Plan to discuss what should be going into the master street plan. Other than that, the plan is essentially ready for public review and discussion. We have tentatively scheduled a public hearing, which will be conducted by the Planning Commission on October fourteenth. That is Columbus Day, but that's when we can get ahold of James Walden to make the presentation. The commission, the committee's feeling was that because he authored that thing and it's in his head, that he could most effectively present to us, to the council, and to the public what his work means to us. We will try to get that on the city's website, both that and the updated map, as soon as updates become available, make this available as lively and as quickly as possible. Hopefully, we can get that done soon. I don't know, are there any extra copies over there in the table?
They're all, they're all, so I'm having myself, as well as some of my other planning counterparts are working on the document now. You're going to have a meeting tomorrow on final edits, and a draft version will still be posted, but the situation that's still draft, as I said, in the document. And as long as the city doesn't have any heartburn over that, as long as we're maintaining that it's still a draft, I'm of the mind, we're putting the information out there, it's still better than that on. So we'd like to do that. Obviously, we'd like to have some clerical things, spelling corrections made before that's done, but I'm figuring we should probably put that up on the end.
Fantastic. The basic schedule here is that while we're holding a public hearing, this will not be a meeting of the Planning Commission. We will take no action. The purpose of the public hearing will be to present the plan to us, to the council, to anybody who is interested in hearing about it, and to hear comments and suggestions from anybody about any tweaks that might be made to make it a better product. The Planning Commission will then consider this plan at its meeting in October, or, no, November, because that will be after the hearing. So we'll have some time to hear comments and so forth. Ideally, we would like to be able to get the full plan to the city council at the council meeting in November, but that kind of depends on what kind of comments we get, and whether people have some suggestions that we think are relevant, that we want to add to or subtract from. And I don't want to, I don't think we want to rush it, but I also don't want this to stretch out into next year if possible. We've been waiting long enough for this one. Chair, what procedure would you go through to accept or reject the recommendations that might be made or tweaked from the public hearing, or something of that nature? What procedure would you go through as a chair for this committee? I would say that our consultant would summarize the comments, and we'll have minutes of meeting and present that to us, because in the final analysis, we will be making, we will pay for adopting a plan and making recommendations to the city council. So whatever comments we hear and think are relevant, that's how, that's where we would start tweaking the document. Will it go into the document before the recommendation goes to the council? Yes.
Have a log of comments. Sure, we can document, please.
This is a good effort. Is there any other old business? New business? First item is a preliminary site plan. Go ahead.
Preliminary site plan for four oh one, West Maryland Avenue. Andrew McCall, the architect.
On your screen, you have a, basically, consideration for an outdoor amusement business. No action, we take it, I, that's my condition. Staff has not received a full scale drawing. Middleton, it's really a courtesy review, but the applicant does want to get some solid input, and they're willing to put the time in, at least, some information, so that they can get some feedback from the staff, as well as perhaps from, I, you can see in your graphic, grass is four oh one, West Maryland Avenue, is zoned three, has a proposed land use of Herschel outside, have an existing conditions of four point two five acres, it's on the north side of West Maryland Avenue, approximately four mile west of Highway one and seven. The graphic basically shows you what the existing zoning is in relation to future land use. Future land use is a layer, if you have been involved, that I'm starting to incorporate in my reports from the Vision 2040 plan. This is not the adopted land use, but this essentially gives you an idea of where the land use is, what relation to the site. It plays into some of the preliminary thoughts any moment. You do have an office land use as far as the future. Perhaps that's been dealt with in transitionals in point five, the books that altered it, for those that have been used in the document. But there is a clear demarcation from the south side of West Maryland Avenue, this location to the north side with respect to the land use. I just wanted to make that noted for the commission tonight. But you see the site is actually, you know, there is a little bit of an R-two area, which was also in the subject comments. Perhaps that was put in place essentially when there was a rezon in the area. Those are the four institutional knowledge of that, we'll speak to that. But there is a creek or a little tributary that runs east-west across the north side of the site. I'll show you that here in this graphic. So you have the site graphic here, and I've superimposed preliminary and drawn graphic that applicant looks to put in place. See, there are a number of buildings, but essentially what you have on the east side of the site is a go-kart track. And you have go-kart track, parking, there'd be two apartments, both coming off the north side of West Maryland Avenue. You've got a forty by fifty building, you've got a, what looks like a forty by forty, a billion, and then working your way on to the west side of the site, you have another probably thirty-eight hundred square foot cafe building. That's a design, one could assume maybe that's going to be slight, perhaps some snacks, hot dogs, and that level of specimens, if I've staffed yet, let alone a scale drawing. This is really what we have to work with. Your report doesn't go into a whole lot with respect to outstanding items. I did make a note to say that there is missing information that would be needed to perform a full site plan. It's not exhaustive, but it's inclusive of several items that are bulleted on the screen in front of you. But planning staff would obviously take any comments we have at this point, record them, place them into our notes, given when the applicant probably decides to be.
My understanding that this would require a conditional use.
It would, it would. Outside entertainment would, because of the noise aspect. I think that's basically where the condition comes in. It's not typically something that would need a conditional use, like the fact that there's a use system, probably would be the reason why the condition is required. But yes, answer question.
I have some comments.
Me too. Go for it.
Okay, one thing I was thinking is, with their go-karts, and hopefully they'll have nothing on them, but they should, and they, one thing I was thinking about is, this go-kart track here, butts up to residential right here. What I was kind of thinking was, take this go-kart track, turn it ninety degrees, and put it right here, take this parking lot, we did over here, make it longer. But that, not sure how much noise it's going to make, what hours it's going to be, but that, the noise is far away from the residential properties there.
If I'm not mistaken, that residential senior apartment.
It is senior.
It strikes me that a go-kart track and senior residence doesn't make a happy combination.
Yeah.
Some others came here, Ron, anyway. Some others came here.
I was thinking along the same lines of the reason, take that go-kart track, put it in the center area, and flip that whole right side over. It would give it a better buffer for the senior to carry out.
Do we know what's on the other side?
Well, there's residents over here, too. In the residential, along the west, too. Yes, that's why I said put it in the middle. Yeah, residents on both ends, so. I think amusement, entertainment area, outdoor like that would be a, would be a benefit to the Sherwood area, especially right along there, because it's on the side of Sherwood Forest and Flash Pass. There's one more thing is, that creek that runs through the property there is the same creek that runs under Keel Avenue over here, and it is really deep in both places, so, you know, there, that's, it's not going to build anything in that creek.
You wish to make a comment? If you do, please sign in and state your name and who you represent, please.
I'm Andrew McCall, and I'm the architect. I came up with the site plan on this, and I wanted to add that these are electric go-karts, so the noise is at the minimum, and that the owner has, obviously, the owner of the residential, has already told them about the noise issue, and that because these are electric, the noise is at the minimum, considering that for noise.
Yeah, I was hoping for that. Good, good deal. Nothing makes that problem.
It wasn't. Who was, would we still want to make this comment?
I don't think it'd be so much of an issue being right there, being electric, because you're not going to have a lot of noise. If they went a little bit farther, maybe built a sound wall buffer there, probably wouldn't be a bad idea, excuse the neighbors.
Yes, I mean, we know that the owner knows that making the difference happens, whatever is possible.
Since this will require a rezone, and it will require conditions, we could put conditions on it if we think it advisable about what type of vehicle, where it's located, powers of operation, things that we think are relevant to protect adjacent property owners. Have any other questions of the commission?
No, I just wanted to clarify that they were, I didn't look at locating the go-kart track locations, that because of the steepness of the creek, adjacent to the best location. Because when the creek is closest there at the, the nearest point, it gets pretty steep, so.
I'm happy with that.
Making jokes. Well, we didn't, we're using that a hundred foot of, of, outside the creek, so, the residential, so that would be relevant to developing that.
Thank you for hearing the commission's comments. We'll be looking for an application for a rezone. Next item of new business? Reflat, Lots sixty-seven through seventy, R, Block Five, Stone Hill Edition.
Yes, sir, as I had stated earlier, that is simply clerical notations that are being corrected. The bearings, which is degrees, minutes, seconds on each line, were incorrect, and you couldn't actually get the right square footage calculated from those numbers, so the engineer record has made those changes. But there's no change that is substantive here at all. There's, it's just simply correcting some notations. So I don't see a problem with at all recommending this to you to, as a final plat, to instruct the chairman to go ahead and sign that.
Those are the only corrections?
Yes.
Chairman, I recommend it. Thanks to you. Recommendation on that. To approve?
Yes.
To approve the final plat?
Yes.
Have a motion in a second. Call the roll.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Knight.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Next item of new business is a final plat for Tramal Estates Six B.
Yes, Tramal Estates Six B previously, several, a couple, three meetings ago, anyway, you had approved Six A at the request of the developer. Six B comes to you for approval, and you did approve the final, I mean, the preliminary plat was approved all at once, they just broke the final plat into two pieces. So everything is in place. We've received the letters that was done today, I believe, is that right, Candy? We've got everything that we need to document, that utilities such as water and electric and all have been installed correctly. I did speak with Public Works today and spoke with our engineering inspector, and we've, we agree that we've got everything inspected for Six B, so we don't see any reason to wait on the approval of the final plat. And our recent discussion here was in recognizing that the planning commission should be approving these, that it's already, everything is in place, and it will, we request that you approve the final plat for Tramal Estates Six B.
Any questions?
Is that on the agenda of the new business?
At the beginning.
Oh, okay.
So moved.
Take it. Have a motion in a second. Call the roll.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Knight.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
That concludes the business of.
Mr. Middleton, may I make an announcement?
Yes.
This is not really new business, but it isn't, it is in the form of an announcement, no decision to be made. We have a draft Vision 2040 plan. We have a recent zoning code that has been adopted. In the adoption, or the creation and adoption of the zoning code, there were a few corrections or changes made, but we kept that to a minimum, knowing that when it's in a code form, we can make those changes in a better form. We need to have our zoning code in agreement with the long-term plan, the Vision 2040. And as I have been informed, Mr. Middleton and others, that the plan is the first step, and then the zoning is the mechanism for enforcing the plan. So we want those two to work together, and we also want to be sure that anything we have in our zoning regulations is not overreaching to the extent that it's something that we should not be enforcing. We have a third party that can do this for us, and he is one of the most widely recognized names in the state of Arkansas in planning, is Mr. Jim Von Tonglen. He authors one of the columns in City in Town. He's been on the judiciary staff at Municipal League for as long as I can remember. And the mayor signed a contract for him to do this review as a third, independent third party, and to align both of the documents, so that as we adopt the plan, we know what our zoning should be, and that if there's something in the zoning that causes concern, then maybe we want to make the changes or tweaks to the plan. So we need these two documents really to come about and be adopted. We need to know we're adopting the plan in its right form, so that when we do our zoning changes, we're going to have those, and everything's going to be okay. And also checking those for, as he listed it, police powers, to be sure that we're not overstepping any bounds. And Mr. Von Tonglen has already begun his work. We've already had a tour through the town, and I think that's going to be really helpful.
Thank you. Have a motion, we adjourn?
So moved.
Take it.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Knight.
Martin.
Aye.
September tenth meeting of the Sherwood Board of Zoning Adjustment will come to order. Please call the roll.
Middleton.
Aye, here.
Bruno.
Here.
Gillum.
Here.
Knight.
Aye.
Martin.
Here.
You have received the minutes of the last meeting. Are there any corrections or additions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Call the roll.
Middleton.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Knight.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Aren't you glad I didn't say here? Okay, the agenda only has one item. Is there any adjustments or changes to the agenda that are necessary? It will be stand as presented. First item, number five.
Variance request of eight feet into the required eight feet side yard setback, eight nine, one, eight nine sixteen, Johnson Drive, Harold Center, corner.
Kevin?
First of all, the digital version of the report that you all have in front of you or that's been sent to you is not available from the screen. A real shot of the subject property, but I do have access to a hard copy of the report itself, so if anybody needs some reference. some reference. Essentially, you have a property owner who is seeking a zero foot side yard setback required, one encroaching. What you're looking at is full encroachment, 100% encroachment. It's for a connected structure, mill that's awning that over tops outside of the house or street. There were some pictures that were inserted in your report. Essentially, this property owner came in, asked for the variance, because I believe it's part of a violation of the city. And so they're asking for the zoning relief to negate the distinct zoning violation. Hey, essentially, in your report, you're dealing with a couple of different applicable sections of your regs. First of all, it's the section that you have setback of what's required, 1441F2 for the record. Then you have 14143B, the powers and board. This section has been referenced prior in reports that I have furnished for this board, namely that a variance may be granted in the following instances only, whereby reason of exceptional narrowish, shallowness, depth, or shape or extraordinary situation or condition. I won't read the rest. You all have a complete report. Essentially, the staff narrative that I have placed in the report says that the side yard structure property line setback is predicated on the application, and that there's some sort of H-back or utility discharge left side. And so their remains wet and they like, they basically have paved it over to negate some of the wetness. They also put the awning over top of it to also protect this area from moisture grits, from rainfall. However, from a zoning perspective, it doesn't make that property inherently be relative to other properties. There are many in the area with the same size footprint, there are many in the area with the same size orientation, there are many in the area with the same layout and infrastructure facilities that discharge the same area. And so for that reason, the staff recommendation, that the request be denied. The site characteristics, including dwelling size, lot of orientation and related infrastructure are not peculiar and or unique, and therefore does not satisfy the conditions required for a variance. That I will let you discuss.
Does the applicant wish to make a statement?
Thank you for here.
If you will, sign in, and any statement you make will be under oath. And if you will stand there into the microphone, and your name.
Harold Stedder.
You need to understand that the sole basis that this board can make on every request for a variance is that the uniqueness of the property constitutes a hardship if one with strict application of the regulations are applied to it. Any statement you make needs to answer that issue.
Yes, sir. It was without my knowledge that a permit was required for the canopy. I did call permits and ask about concrete and mentioned a cover at that time. I was told that was, permit was not required. Understand now that the permit is for the canopy, but there was misunderstanding between them and me. For the reason, I went ahead and did that primarily for safety, for the side of the house, protection, things that I could store beside the house. Understand it's illegal if you choose not to allow it. Understand it's just a sequence to go through and try to get approval on it. It would benefit me if it was approved. Understand either way.
Thank you. Does any staff wish to make a comment?
What's illegal here, Rob? What's illegal from this picture?
My understanding is the canopy.
It is a place in the roof portion, hence the awning.
The roof portion is the reference. But the fence is okay.
Yes, sir. It's the fact that you have a connection, basically physical extension of this structure, structure itself is.
And his reasoning was for, I guess there's two air conditionings there, sloppy area. Did you have to have permit to put concrete in it?
Yeah.
Would it be illegal if he'd had a six foot awning to come over his beams?
Reason the setbacks physically are there for fire code reasons. Usually a 20 foot building, building setback requirement, just fire code, I think eight foot in our code, in part one, amplifies that a little. Sure that you're definitely going to get that 20 feet of building. The fact that you have structure. However, ancillary, it may seem, can affect the ability for, or enable the ability of fire potential to spread more easily with one structure. I think that is having structural.
In this case, I don't see a hardship or anything unique to his lot. I make the motion to deny.
We have a motion?
Take it.
And a second. This is a motion to deny the request for a variance. Call the roll.
Middleton.
Hi.
Bruno.
Hi.
Gillum.
Hi.
Knight.
No.
Martin.
Hi.
The board has established that hardship does not exist and that the canvas or the top needs to be stricken, removed. Do staff will please get a letter to that effect out to the applicant within the next couple of days?
Yes, sir, I believe. As I understand it, that's 30 days to make the removal. So we will get that letter out and be sure that it's documented.
I see no further business for the board.
Move it.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a second.
Middleton.
Hi.
Bruno.
Hi.
Gillum.
Hi.
Knight.
Hi.